Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 7th day of November 2024. In attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Baze, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schleba, County Administrator Steve Howard and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Howard.
We have a few items, additional items. E14, Addendum to the T-Hanger Lease Agreements, Buell Colson Buy Fly Sell LLC Snyder Renewals. E15, Additional Item, Proposed Aviation Hanger Lease Template and Application. Just additional information for E1S is the five-year Financial Strategic Plan Update, the wording in the brief overview to read one-time cost, not an annual cost of $100,000 per year. E1Q, Additional Information, Invoice Cloud, Updated Insurance That Includes Waiver of Subrogation. E1P, Just Additional Information. PB24223, Omnia Georgia Partners. Carisoft Technology Corp., Explanation of Terms Were Not Accepted and Need to Be Approved by the Board in a Letter of Support was also included from the Building Alliance. E1L, Just Additional Information. It's just the proposal's been updated to reflect a reduction from $1,040,0987 to $983,487 and 10 cents. E1O, Additional Information, Letter of Support from the Citrus County Building Alliance. E10, Letter of Support from the Citrus County Building Alliance. H1, The Financial Study, Also to Update the Aviation Authority Board with their Consensus and Update, which has been updated in the Airport Progress Report Slides dated 10/28/2024. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Board?
Madam Chairman. Move to approve the agenda with the additional items stated by Mr. Howard.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Consent Agenda, would you like to take it in its entirety?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Proclamations.
Madam Chair, motion to approve Items C1 and C2. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, join me down there.
Those representing National Farm City Week, if you could please come forward. Whereas American farmers and ranchers help feed the world by producing a bounty of nutritious foods. To do this, they rely upon essential partnerships with urban and suburban communities to supply, sell, and deliver furnished products across the country and around the globe as they contribute to the health and the well-being of our country and to the strength of our economy. And whereas during National Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of this cooperative network. Agriculture employs more than 2 million workers, including farmers, ranchers, shippers, processors, marketers, retailers, truck drivers, inspectors, and others who annually contribute an annual impact of $149 billion to Florida's economy. As they perform their daily work, farmers and ranchers preserve freshwater recharge areas, wildlife habitat, and green space. Consumers help farm families maintain their superior natural resource conservation practices by purchasing Florida agricultural products. And whereas Farm City Week activities celebrate the mutually beneficial relationships that support quality of life we all enjoy. As we gather with family and friends around the Thanksgiving table, we count these relationships among our many blessings. We commend the many Floridians whose hard work and ingenuity provide us with food abundance and reflect the true spirit of our state and nation. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County does hereby proclaim November 20th through November 24th, 2024, as National Farm City Week in Citrus County and encourages citizens in the rural and urban areas to acknowledge all those who work, who working together produce and supply our community and nation with an abundance of agricultural products. Executed the 7th day of November 2024.
Thank you. I'm Abe Blomond. I work for Floor Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. I just want to say a few things. We really do appreciate the county, the commissioners, and everybody else that recognizes what our farmers and producers do. It's a big job they have in today's world, and they do a great job of it. They're good stewards of the land. And we hope every time that you sit down for a meal, that you thank a farmer. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Those representing National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, if you could please come forward. Whereas on January 31st, 2024, members of the Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition's Continuum of Care identified 206 households with a total of 277 people who were literally homeless. The Citrus County Public School System reported for school year 2324, 746 students experienced homelessness based on the Department of Education's homeless definition. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable and sustainable housing in Citrus County for very low-income residents to the asset-limited income-constrained employment population. And to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, food pantries, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas there are many organizations committed to housing, sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals. And whereas there are many organizations committed to housing, sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals, food, supplies to the homeless and hungry, including Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition, Basics United, Caroline's Gate Project, CASA, Citrus County Schools, Citrus Lending, Community Food Bank for Citrus County, Daystar Life Center, Department of Children and Families, Family Resource Center, Florida Department of Health, Life Stream Behavioral Center, the Lula McGrady Foundation, Nature Coast Ministries, Operation PAAR, Seven Rivers Church, Stephen Teaster II Esquire, Society of Saint Vincent de Paul Cares, Yaya's Youth and Young Adult Shelter of Citrus, Zero Hour Life Center, and many more. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Citrus County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, that November seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, is hereby proclaimed National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Citrus County, Florida. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and support from citizens and private, public, nonprofit service entities. Executed the seventh day of November two thousand twenty-four.
Just real quick, my name is Barbara Vendito, I'm the Executive Director to Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition. Can't speak, I'll slow down. First of all, I want to say thank you to each one of you personally, because I know the work and effort you have all put in the homeless issue, especially during the last twelve months. By choice or not, we needed the attention. The point-time count was the last week of January. Hernando County had two hundred and six households that weren't living without a home. As of September thirtieth, Citrus County, excuse me, my apologies. Citrus County had three hundred and sixty households living without a home. That number is six hundred and eighty-two people. So it's a problem that's increasing with the economy issues and the move in, the influx into Florida. So I'm excited that we're finally all working together and we're going to actually have resolutions. Thank you. I do want to throw in a quick little shout out to Michelle Alfred and her group. You have a phenomenal county housing team. When the hurricanes happened, they stepped up in huge, massive ways. And she and her group have knocked it out of the park and have made our jobs so much easier and have made the citizens of Citrus County home, even when their home is floating away. So, thank you.
It's been my distinct pleasure to serve with you these last four years. And in recognition of that, we have a plaque for you. And I'm going to stop talking so we can pose for the cameras, but it's, it's been a heck of a journey. And I admire so much about what you've done serving as a commissioner. So thank you, Commissioner Schleba. Okay, we have only one time certain that will delay our open to the public just a little bit. We have a presentation on the Inverness Airport Project Update.
Good afternoon. I'd like to start this off, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Todd Reagan, Aviation Project Manager of Citrus County. I'd like to start this presentation off with about four sections of it. First is going to be going over Inverness Airport, their projects. Next, talking a little bit about the business side for the business park. And I'll have, I'll ask Director Steve Bayham to come up and speak a little bit on that. And then I can talk about the twenty action items that were presented on May fourteenth workshop, what has been approved and where we're at with those. And then if, and then if we have time, we can also discuss Crystal River as well. Thank you. Okay. Business Park Phase One, it is complete and ready for business. Moving on to Phase Two, we are still gathering documents to go out to bid. And next is our, our corporate hanger. Our corporate hanger is at thirty percent. We do have a lease template for that, just received it yesterday, so I'm reviewing it currently. We'll get back to that on that. Also with both airports, we're doing our rules and regulations, that is ongoing. We kicked that off last month. And we've already spoken with both airports and local E eight chapter as well. Leases, yeah, just talked about a ground lease, we just received that yesterday. And then today you'll also be reviewing a hanger lease, a template for that. And I guess we can move on to the business side for the business park.
Good afternoon. Stephen Bayham, County Economic Development Director. Todd stole a little bit of my thunder. I was hoping to come up here and tell you that after a few years, several years, a long road, that the business park was ready to go. But he already took that from me, so. I thought when I came on board about six months ago, that knowing that, that asset that was going to be coming online, I thought I had till maybe twenty twenty-six, first quarter, and then I was quickly informed that you got till the end of the year to start doing something with it. So here we are, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. And I quickly got on, shifted into here.
Wait, could you repeat that? Where the, the government is ahead of schedule?
Just, just, just a hair.
Okay, just checking. Just wanted to make sure I didn't, didn't imagine things, okay.
It was ahead of my original thought schedule, let's go with that. So a couple of months ago, we started placing advertisements to market the, the property. The first one, I believe you'll see up on the screen, it's on page fifteen ninety-seven of your, of your packet. Was in Business Facilities Magazine, it was their September, October issue. And they have a section that they, they focus on different states throughout their various periods of the year, and it was the Florida section. So we were highlighted within that section of their magazine, you can see a little advertisement that we have there promoting the park. And in addition to that, we got a little extra land yap, a little extra something out of this. Right above that, on the same page, we did a little small editorial promoting the announcement that we got a couple of months ago from the governor for the two-point-eight million dollars investment into the Holder Industrial Site. So we got a two-for-one out of the, the little ad placement there, which was a nice, nice touch. Back to the park itself, as I said, we're at the end of Phase One. My World, it is shovel-ready, so we started marketing it, as you can tell. And we have already gotten a couple of little bites, some interest. We have a couple of conversations, very, very early in the process. You know, I don't like to get ahead of ourselves, but it did spark some interest. So it shows that they're working. The park itself, infrastructure's ready to go, the first two-thirds, the non-aeronautical side. So if you recall, it's at the very end of the airport, eighty, approximately eighty acres, I agree with Todd, we don't like to say eighty acres because with the development, it's not going to be quite there. But the first section that's directly south of the runway will be the aeronautical side. Now that's going to be part of Phase Two, it's going to take a little longer to develop there. But the taxiway will extend into the park on that side, and there will be some commercial hangars that will be over there. So we plan on that being our first aeronautical side. On the non-business side, the part that's already ready to go, or the not, the non-aeronautical side, on that, that portion, that's what we're marketing right now. We feel that we can get some very good business there. We've, we've had interest from some low-hanging fruit that we kind of like turned away, that it just wasn't, wasn't the right fit, that was basically just a warehouse. We, that's not what we're looking for here. As, as you all, I've had conversations with all of you, we're, we're looking to turn the page, we're looking to, to increase our economic base here. And we want to have an opportunity to have better jobs for our citizens. So we're looking for light manufacturing, aeronautical-based, tech-based. Drones has been a big conversation over the last few months, so we're, we're looking into those industries or component part manufacturers for those industries. And moving forward, we, we have our first placement, but we are working, I'm actually inking an agreement with another, for another ad placement, but will be a year-long running ad, ad placement. Be with trade and industry development. This one will consist of a year-long article that would be available on their website. It'll start sometime here in November and it'll run through next November. But in addition to that, we'll have a banner placement that will be placed on their site for a year-long, as well as eventually, we will get a spot on their biggest issue, which will be in the springtime, the second quarter of two thousand twenty-five. That ad placement will be in their awards issue, which is their most viewed, most read article. So hopefully by that time, we'll be working on some other deals. And the last piece of that will come sometime in the summer. That is called their Audience Extension, which is guaranteed ninety thousand impressions. They do a, a direct marketing campaign on our behalf, driving interest back to the county and driving it back to what we hope to have in place at that point in time, an external marketing site that will provide a lot more information, not just on the business park, but on the county and all the other assets that we have here to work with. So we're using the business park, from my standpoint, as a springboard to try to market not just it and the Inverness Airport, but all the other assets that we have here to offer in the county. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schleba, or, sorry, we got questions.
Steve, I just wanted to say thank you. I feel like it's my birthday, because this was my number-one initiative coming into office four years ago. And what you might not know is the reason why I wanted to move the animal shelter is because I felt if we wanted to core industry, we didn't need to go by